Good evening, everyone. My name is Sridhi Guruntham. I'm the president of PTA. So, Anand, it's a pleasure to welcome you all to our candidates forum today. And also, I would like to thank all the audience for making your time to join us. And today, we are going to have a wonderful session with our candidates today. It's a great opportunity for them to interact with you. And also, we have a lot of questions received through emails from our members. So, before going further, I would like to introduce our moderator today, Mr. Rupin Sahih Kwaney. He's an involved parent and he's the president of Families for Education Improvement. And today, we have Liz Walsh, Sheila Jennifer, William Campbell, Kristiana Rigby, Jason Evelyn, Deb Young, Joan Pontius. So, we have other candidates which could make it today. CN McCarty, Nivee Kortum, Opal Jones, Hank Boyd, David Youngman. Today, all the questions that session will be recorded. And all the questions and answers will be published as written in our website as well. With that, I would like to invite our moderator today, Mr. Rupin. A very good evening to our audience and our candidates who are running. There's nothing more noble than public service. So, thank you for running. It warms our heart that there are so many good candidates. But before we begin, I'd just like to observe a moment of silence for the tragedy we saw. And, you know, that our hearts are wide for Rob Elementary School. Thank you. So, let's, let me talk about the format tonight that we are, we're going to follow. Each candidate will have two minutes for their opening statement. Then we'll begin our Q and A session. Each candidate will have one minute to answer. The clock is there. I'll get through as many questions as PTA has given me. Around eight o'clock or after one hour, we'll open it to four audience questions, which will be in written format as well. Around eight thirty, we'll wind down and have, you know, closing statements from all the candidates. So, and we'll always go in the, you know, either left or right or right to left. It's going to be very hard for me to go random because I'm going to forget someone. So, Joan, we'll start from you, if that's okay? And why don't you give us your opening statement? And then we can go to, you know, William and so on.
Hello, Jessica. Hi, my name's Joan Pontius. I'm, um, I'm, I'm the Democratic nominee for District Five because it's unprotested. So, I'll be running against David Youngman in the fall. Um, I've lived in, I'm from Pittsburgh. I've lived in Howard County 23 years with my husband. No children, so we didn't come here for the schools, unlike a lot of people. We came here for its open spaces and its proximity to our jobs in other counties. Um, immediately on coming here, we, our, our little community that we lived in was involved with a development going in parallel to ours and a school going in. And, uh, the neighborhood worked together with the county to modify the site plans and the access roads for the development so that it would not hinder the peace of our little street. So, that was my introduction to working with the county. Um, over the years, I've sort of become a spokesperson for our little neighborhood and keeping the neighborhood up to date on issues that affect us. And one of the biggest problems we've had is with land use and the transition of agricultural and residential properties into commercial use. And so, this has become a big problem for us, for our peace at home. So, when I saw a month ago that David Youngman was unopposed, I thought, well, you know, why not? He had voted to expand the public service area onto an agricultural parcel on 108. I live on, off of 108, and the traffic there is already terrible. So, I've joined the race. My background's in project management at the NIH. And through that, I've learned to work for, with a group of people at a common cause. And I hope I can earn your support in November to preserve the residential quality of life in Howard County.
Good evening. My name is Bill Campbell. I'm a 48-year resident of Howard County. My children attended schools from kindergarten through high school here. And I love Howard County. It was one of the places we wanted to move, rather than someplace closer to Baltimore, DC. I have three pillars for my campaign. One is, we're a big business. The budget for Howard County is over $2.2 billion. I've been the chief financial officer for the U.S. Coast Guard for nine years, the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs with a $65 billion budget and 255,000 employees. And Amtrak. Now, Amtraks never made me money, but they lost less money with me than they'd ever lost before. So, I know how to, I know how to manage a buck. And I think that we need professional management for our $2.2 million, uh, $2.2 billion and the billion dollars that goes to the public education. I also want to control and manage development. We are coming to a point where we had uncontrolled development for over 60 years. We are running out of space and we're causing problems, not only with the school system, but other things like transportation and the environment. And then the third thing, the primary reason why I'm running is we have 222 mobile classrooms. That's the politest thing I can call them. They have over 5,500 students in them. That's 9% of our students. If we were to replace those mobile classrooms today, we'd need a billion dollars in construction. So, let that sink in. You're either going to have to raise the taxes or find the money in the budget. And I could find the money in the budget if I'm given a chance. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Sheila Jennifer. I'm the Republican candidate in District Two for Howard County Council. I'm a 35-year resident of Howard County, a fourth-generation Marylander. I have three pillars on my campaign. Speech, freedom, our speech, freedom for our family and freedom for our health. During the COVID pandemic, I helped with my grandchildren's education and found that there were quite a few things that were wanting in the education system. I have taught, I've been an archivist for the federal government, and I have worked with General Services Administration budgets as well. My main concern will be education and freedom and hopefully not have the COVID protocols that we saw enacted during this last pandemic. I'm hoping to have a report done through the current commission, the current commission, where we reevaluate how we treated COVID and the protocols for COVID. And I'm hoping that you will lend me your support. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kristiana Rigby. Thank you to everyone who has organized this event tonight. It's been my honor to represent District Three on the county council for the last several years, or three years, maybe it just feels like several. But District Three is in the southeast corner of Howard County. It includes communities in Columbia, Savage, Jessup, Guilford, and North Laurel. My educational background is in environmental policy, and I started my career as a community organizer, where I worked on consumer protection initiatives, strengthening environmental regulations, and also providing the safeguard employment opportunities for the LGBTQ+ community. I returned to Howard County several years ago to raise my family and continue my service in our community through work with several local nonprofits and as well as serving on the Kingston Trivans Village Board. And after doing all of that, I decided to run for office in 2018 for the first time. Over the last several years, or again, it feels like several. Um, I've worked collaboratively with our county executive to deliver record funding for our school system and to pass landmark legislation that improves the lives of Howard County residents. My top priorities have been increasing school funding, taking climate action, and expanding access to affordable housing, as well as improving economic justice and building more equitable transportation systems. I look forward to your questions and the conversation this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for holding this forum and hosting us tonight. My name is Deb Young, and I am the council member for District Four. And I've had the pleasure of serving our residents for three years and six months, okay, to be exact. First and foremost, why I'm running. I love Howard County. I have lived here for 34 years. And I am so happy to have made this area my home. I know the history of this county, its schools, and its neighborhoods. I have volunteered on county commissions and boards for decades. I served as the parent chair, or the parent education chair at my daughter's elementary school, PTA. I served as a vice president at Harper's Choice, PTA. And I served as the Wild Lake Booster Club president when my daughter was there. And one of the things that I learned during all of that school service is how much our schools really need our help. And one of the primary reasons why I decided to run was to ensure that I could be there to help fund our schools. I am very pleased to report that we were very successful in doing that today. Thank you to my council members, to my right and to my left, who passed a budget today that included $45 million to the school district over maintenance of effort. That is a really, really big deal. And I think we're very proud of what we were able to do. I'm also pleased to report that not only did I receive the Howard County Educators Association endorsement in 2018, but I have received it again this year in 2022. And that endorsement has been based on my very much decided record that it, that is to help our schools number one. That is my number one priority.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Jansen E. Glenn, and I'm running as a candidate in District Four. As a Democratic candidate in District Four. By way of a background, I've spent several years, well, close to a decade, working in local government. I was appointed by former county executive Allen Kittleman to serve as his assistant chief administrative officer. When the current administration came in, county executive Calvin Ball retained me and reappointed me within that role. As a result, I have deep technical subject matter expertise across all levels of, of government. I had my portfolio procurement, Office of Human Rights and Equity, Human Resources, Central Fleet. And I worked on a host of policy implementation. By way of education, I'm an attorney. I also have done a lot of work in the community. I just finished two terms, served on the Hickory Ridge Village Board. I've been appointed by the governor and the Maryland Commission for Civil Rights, where I serve as the vice chair. I'm also the secretary of the Howard County Conservancy. Much of the work that I do in this community is centered around environmental and climate justice. And I was, and I'm proud to partner with the Howard County Public School System as well as the Conservancy to help bring the, um, to help obtain the NOA eight grant in terms of teaching middle school kids climate, uh, environmental and climate justice. I'm running in and of both of the three main priorities that I have. I'm running because first and foremost, education is paramount to me. I have two daughters in the Howard County Public School System. I spent the past two days being a judge in the simulated congressional hearings, and it's been an honor. I also, two of my other priorities are environmental sustainability along with, as in environmental sustainability, along with, I'm sorry, that clock was still moving on.
Thank you, Kijak, for having us here tonight. My name is Liz Walsh. I'm the current elected representative for Howard County Council's District One. Uh, we are the northeast corner of the county. So, if you live in most of Ellicott City, most of the Albridge, Jersey Search, some of Hanover, I am your elected representative. My background is a Mount Heaven Viking, class 39, Georgia Tech civil engineer. Uh, and then I went to Georgetown Law and practiced in Big Law for almost two decades. Never really thought that public office, local government was my calling. I have two children, fourth and sixth grade. We live in Old Ellicott City, which is where I come back to when it was time for me to raise my family. And once those babies got older and I started paying attention to land use, is when I started to get really concerned. My, my thinking always had been, someone smarter than me, someone who's spending more time on this issue than me, someone who's able to dedicate that time, is, is handling this stuff, so I shouldn't be worried about it. And that applied to everything like environmental laws, how our schools are managed, what's going on with land use, right? Because that's what everything centers on, land use. I come from the district that represents both of the two historic districts. I also come from the district that consistently for the last two decades has had the most growth, or second-most growth in the last 10 years. I sent my high schoolers from District One to seven of the 12 high schools in this county. And after the redistricting lines, it happened in December of 2021, none of those high schools are in District One. Land use drives every other decision that is made in the local government. I stand for kids, I stand for trees, I stand for honest government. I won last time on the grassroots campaign, I'm going to win again the same way. I'm a Citizens Election Fund candidate. I take no donations from developers, from LLCs, from anybody who's not a human being, most of them are women.
Thank you, everyone, for those very insightful opening statements. Now, we'll begin our Q and A session. Each candidate gets one minute. And Liz, we'll start with you. How can you, as a council member, ensure that the school system meets the financial obligations of Kirwin Blueprint for Maryland's Future? Second part of the question is, what percentage of the county's budget do you think should be spent on the school system?
Thank you. In terms of meeting, well, when the county has some time to get to those requirements that are set by the state. But I think everyone, hopefully, is approaching that as an incremental process, where we have to bring teacher salaries up over a course of years, rather than wait till the very end and not do it. Same thing with the pre-K, universal pre-K that's promised as part of Kerwin. We want to start incorporating that in the schools that are already equipped to provide those services now, and then build on to that. One of the laws that just recently passed before the council was something to set aside space, particularly along with one, for those pre-K centers, whether managed by the schools, rec and parks, or private providers. Providing those facilities in our neighborhoods where people can hopefully even walk to them from where they live was a huge focus for me. We have a lot of discussions about the percentage that school budget should be. I think right now it's hovering around 51%, 52%. It is the economic driver of this county. It should deserve top-notch, highest priority for funding, and I'm looking to support that. Thank you.
Yes, so what I'll do is I'll answer the, in reverse order, just to make sure that I get that first part out. My thinking, again, as Councilmember Walsh noted, the education is the reason why many people come to this community. I moved to this community, and I have two daughters in elementary school, all of my classes are in. And, and that was the primary reason, primary motive for me coming to, moved into Howard County, Columbia specifically. And so, I do think that when you just look at a percentage, most education in particularly target counties, it's usually made up of, education budget's usually made up of around 50% to 60%. And I think that's something that we should continue to maintain going forward, even with the current, with the, uh, the blueprint for Maryland mandate. As Councilwoman Walsh noted, it has a phase and period. That's why I'm happy to see that we are on track to make that, which is why the county executive's budget, which the council passed, it, it gave money to educators, school support.
Well, we just passed a budget today that pretty much fully funded what the school district asked us for. And that included money that would start paying the teachers in particular, the, um, what will be required, a $60,000 starting salary. So, in this budget, we will be moving up the starting salaries to $56,500, which I think is a great start. And I know that we will continue down that road. How are we going to fund this? Um, I think very carefully. Um, and we are going to have to continue to look at every single aspect of our county budget to ensure that we can fund Kirwin as fully as we will need to in the coming years. What percentage should this be of our budget? As much as we can possibly afford, because our school system is definitely the crown jewel in Howard County.
Thank you. So, I think the most important information that I could add to what the folks who've already gone and shared is that we, you know, are exceeding the state estimation for Kirwin at this time, which is great. We have always invested in Howard County's education here. And I think, I know, I cannot imagine a world in which our elected officials don't do that. You know, two-thirds of this council currently has children in school right now. You know, it is vital to us, and we all deeply understand that. I think that really the question is, how, how does that happen on the board of ed side and when they're going in and prioritizing those things? How can we make sure that we're retaining our teachers? That we are, because when 60,000 becomes law in '26, that would be the floor. So, we're going to have to go above the floor if we want to be, you know, the top place that teachers will come to. So, I think that's probably one of the biggest considerations we have coming up is how to rise above the floor so we can continue to attract our teachers.
The blueprint for Maryland was a result of the current commission. It's a spinoff, and we have a 10-year phase in, which is good. But if we're going to talk about constantly taxing our, our, you know, our neighborhoods and our schools, we need to look at our test scores. And if we're going to continue to have people coming to Howard County, they will be looking at our test scores. And we've seen math at 58% and reading at 60%. Howard County gets 60% of our budget. That's a lot of money, and people want to know, what are we getting for that? We're being taxed, especially after coming after one of the most horrific pandemics ever, and we come out of that and we are still being taxed. We know that education is driving why people come to Columbia, but we cannot fantasize and think that people will continue to come. If our test scores do not show up, if we do not have students taking AP courses, the numbers drop. So, I'm just hoping that we will continue on the excellence road.
I read the budget. It's about 700 pages long. And somewhere between pages 28 and 30 in the executive summary, if I could quote, the Kirwin Blueprint decreases, quote, "are not large enough to eclipse how far above the required local share Howard County currently is." This is in the 2023 budget. I'll translate that into English. What that means is the Kirwin slash blueprint funding is currently more than adequate, and no additional funding is required. That's not going to be the same in the future. The $60,000 that we're going to give our teachers in a couple of years was based on 2.25% inflation. It's now over 8%. By the time, unless we can get it below 7.5%, we will need $80,000 starting. And every other teacher and every other county employee is going to need a raise too. We've got a plan for that.
Yeah, as far as what percent should go to these changes which are required and where will we find the funding for them? Funding will come from our local taxes, but it can also come from the state and federal sources. We have to be creative in trying to find funding for this. I think it's wrong to ask what percent should go towards education because in my time in Howard County, our taxes have gone up about 50%. We used to be the lowest in the state, and now we're in the highest. So, I think a better question is, how much does it cost to run the school system? And also look at, not percentages, but the total cost, and try to cut back on our spending to bring our tax rate a bit lower as it was 20 years ago.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. After that very important question, we will move towards rapid fire. And that means each candidate may get a different, will get a different question. They still get one minute. So, I'll start with you, Joan. You mentioned the need to increase counties' revenues right now. Do you have any specific proposals in terms of county revenues? How will you change that?
Increasing revenues in the county?
Yes, I thought you just said that.
Um, I, I would like to cut spending in the county.
Okay.
Yeah, and, um, there's a lot of examples of spending that I think could be better spent on our schools, for example. For, for instance, the new cultural center that's going in is a huge multimillion-dollar project. While we have children in schools that are, you know, like you said, in trailers. We spend a lot of money in District Five. We have a program to buy development rights from farmers, and that's great for preservation. But then the county council turns around and expands the public service area into an agricultural parcel. And they, they could have prevented the loss of that agricultural property for free. So, I would like to look at how we're spending our money and make sure there's a benefit to how we spend.
Okay, thanks. In some ways, Howard County is a victim of its own success, and it does not receive as much state funding for schools from the state as other counties. What efforts, given your experience, would you make to increase the school matching from the state?
That's almost impossible to do. Recently, our Howard County General Assembly delegation put forward a proposal to try to get relief from the state for the $500 million in deferred maintenance. Those are roofs that haven't been replaced, the HBA systems that need to be replaced. We have a half a billion dollars in deferred maintenance. And we've been rebuffed because we are viewed, rightly so, as a wealthy county. And we're always going to be with Montgomery at the back of the line for any money. The poorer counties in Baltimore City will also. I don't think that there's any way to change that in an apples. We have to fix our own problems here. And the first thing I'd like to do is look at the 60% of the county's spending that is not education.
Thank you. Sheila. What capital improvement project would be at the top of your list to fund? What capital improvement projects would be at the top of your list to fund?
Capital improvement projects?
For the school system?
For the school system.
Yes, in general.
Looking at some of the older schools, as Bill just said, we need to maintain and keep those schools functioning properly, making sure that they don't have issues such as mold and things like that. Those are important. There are also tutoring projects that come with the money that has been given by Kirwin, so we could use money from a lot of these grants to help with the capital projects. The capital budget is at about 90 million, is it? And so, some of that funding can be used to help with the older villages so that we don't become the villages of broken glass where people are looking at older things. And we know that there are plenty of countries and communities that are old, and that doesn't necessarily mean that you can't function properly.
Any specific capital improvement projects? Any specific, this is all very generic, but anything specific?
A capital improvement project would be, um, maybe funding some of the downtown area, some of the office buildings that need to be put back in place from the loss of COVID.
Okay, thanks.
For the schools as well.
Thank you. Kristina. If the state lacks enough matching funding for necessary school projects, should the county fund the difference or delay the requirement? Kristina, that's a question for you.
Sorry, should the county fund the difference or?
Yes, if the state lacks enough matching funding for necessary school projects, should the county fund the difference or delay the requirement?
I think that really depends on what it's going to be. We raised the school surcharge significantly to fund the capital projects, as well as, um, we also receive a portion of the transfer tax that goes to capital improvement projects. So, it's really going to depend So it's really going to depend on what the improvement is. If it's a smaller one, sure, it's possible that the county can do it. If it's a larger one, then we might have to bond it, we might have to use a combination of PECO. If it's something like a high school, that's very expensive, so we're really going to have to work with state partners on that. But they, you know, on the council, I and the county executive also worked to get the Build to Learn Act passed with our state delegation, which gives additional state funds for school capital projects. So I'd say that's, I don't know, it really depends. But I would, I would hope that if it's urgent, we can find a way to get it done soon. But we do have the 10-year capital improvement plan from the Board of Education, so the council's really most important role is to fund their priorities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How should we address the hundreds of thousands of dollars of deferred maintenance in our school system?
Hundreds of thousands of dollars of maintenance?
Yeah.
Well, let's get back to Mr. Campbell's $1 billion of money that we need. The good news is that this year, once again, because we had more revenue than we had anticipated, we were able to give the school district $100 million toward a down payment, I guess, on that, $1 billion. And I think there's a plan in place now that will allow us to gradually chip away at that. It's going to be really, really hard, because there are always competing interests in the government budget and in the school budget as well. There's only so much money that we can give to capital, which is renovations and HVAC systems versus what the school system needs for operating. So I think that we just have to keep prioritizing it, and we have to keep making sure that we're making that down payment every single week.
Thank you. This year, the county executive and the school board used American Rescue Planning funding and some of its ESER Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Fund grant to give bonuses to school teachers. If you had the good fortune to receive more unexpected federal dollars, how would you spend them and why?
Specifically about the school system?
Yes.
Yes. So that money went towards, I believe it went in the form of a bonus. I think if I had the good fortune, or if I'm on the council, I had the good fortune to have additional revenue that could be utilized, it would be, it would be towards the entire school ecosystem. School, additional par educators, making sure that there, that we have more mental health, counselors. I would also spend a lot of that money on, during the pandemic, I noticed that we have a lot of cafeteria workers, and many of them, while the educators have been the focus under the Kerwin or the blueprint mandate, there are many people in that educator ecosystem that also need to be focused on. So I would put a lot of money towards those personal costs to make sure that they have competitive salaries. Of course, our educators are primary, but the rest of that support ecosystem.
Thank you. Liz. Would you initiate legislation for a large-scale audit of the county's budget? So appropriate.
The whole budget, the $2 billion budget?
Yeah.
I don't, no, I don't, I don't think it would be that. I know early in our term, the council was involved in some legislation to audit the schools, but we didn't, you know, because whatever was being moved for was in town. I think, you know, in an ideal world, our executive branch and the respect of the agencies that report to the executive are being good stewards of their funds. And I think in large part, you know, we tend to see that as we, the council undertakes that annual budget review. But the budget review itself, for what the council can introduce to that process, is still limited, that to undertake something as comprehensive as an audit of the entire $2 billion budget seems like it would distract from many, many other things that all of us would rather let just.
Thank you. Liz will bring in the next question from you. So you get to go twice. What services and projects would you scale back or delay in order to fully fund the blueprint for success mandates?
Oh, I like that question. I think, you know, as evidenced as recently as several hours ago in our budget final approval votes, I do worry about us as a county investing in really glamorous kind of, you know, marquee-type projects at the expense of what we know we need for our schools. And that's things like the trailers that are behind them. It's things like the whole new high school that we need in places like Elbridge. It's things like the bathrooms that work that we need in Dunlop and Middle. We heard the appeals, and they were great and very persuasive from the library, for example, that said, you know, we're really crunched in these spaces, and we can't provide all the services that we want to. Apply that to every single school in this county almost. And so always, always, until we have met the needs of each of our kids in each of the schools that we send them to, I am always going to be looking for projects that don't need to happen right now until we need those needs met.
AFC. AFC laws currently contain test for housing allocations, school utilization, and intersection capacity. Are there any other infrastructure needs you would include in those laws?
So the beauty is, AFC gets reviewed after every general plan update. So AFC, the next iteration of the county council, we'll be spending some time reviewing AFC. Now, the added point of facilities or units, I think when you look at the, compared to the other counties in Maryland, particularly the larger, the larger counties, and the reality is Howard County is the second fastest growing county in the state, so we have to start maybe looking at some of the criteria that these other counties are utilizing. The one that I do definitely, and I've said it before on the forums, I think needs to be added to the mix, would be our emergency personnel, specifically fire. And we have a population, an aging population, and many of the EMS calls are on par with major cities like DC and Baltimore. I served in the Fire Staffing Commission under Alan Kittleman's administration. I can tell you that that is something that has to be analyzed.
Thank you. What AFC legislation changes would you submit prior to the next task force cycle? That's a question for you.
Thank you for asking the question. So this is the open-close chart for 2022. And where you see really dark red, that means that our schools are closed. And where you see the slightly darker orange, that means that, let's see, that means that all schools in this area are over 100% capacity. And it goes right down the list. What is important about this is the problems that we can see from looking at the colors on this chart. What are we going to do about it? Well, in the general plan, we're going to have to make some really tough decisions about how we are going to fit all of the students in these closed schools. What can we do about AFC? We can lengthen the time. And Ms. Walsh has proposed two pieces of legislation that I vote for that would do exactly that.
Thank you. You can post that on your website, and I'm sure we'll read that. Next question. Do you agree that residential development pays for itself?
Well, this is always a fun one, because the real honest answer is, it depends. Can I use your chart for a minute, please? Thank you. So what Ms. Tonti has referenced earlier is PSA line, which you can see has really big effects on community, on communities, and it's coming up. And so I think one of the biggest things that we can do when we look at whether or not residential development pays for itself is, where is it occurring? Are you having to extend far out? Where are we, down here? This is why this is lighter color. You can extend out into here, but it's going to cost you a lot. Is it going to pay for that? Probably not. But if you say converted your basement into a place for your aging parents, where they can retire and live in community with you, then no. I mean, then that, yeah, would absolutely pay for itself. Or if you had an ABU, an accessory dwelling unit for your child with disability, you know, these options are the things that will really restore our community and pay for themselves.
Thank you, sir. What do you want to accomplish on the zoning board?
I'm hoping that zoning board will begin looking at AFC in a different way. We look, it looked many times as if the development precedes the school overcrowding. So I wish they would, instead of putting the developers first, they put the school system's needs first, and I see that happening a lot. AFC has made plenty of, plenty of room to help with development, but there are too many problems with how they can get around the loopholes of making sure they don't have overdevelopment. So I think we need to work on that.
Thank you. Billy. Would you support increasing the length of time developers have to wait to build overcrowded school zones?
Well, of course, matter of fact, when you look at development, every 500 residential units, regardless of their cost, get you 200 more students in the system. We are drowning in students. We have 9% of them in trailers. I want every kid out of a trailer, at least a plan, a funded plan, to take care of that billion dollars in construction and the half a billion dollars in deferred maintenance. That will put a big crimp on any county developer. And if we're going to have development, the word nowadays is affordable housing. Some of the affordable housing is neither sanitary, safe, or fit for a lot of people to raise their families. You only have to look at the reviews on the websites for the affordable housing in District 3 to see that. I think that we need to have a pause. A recession will help us give time to hope that developers are ready to fix it.
Thank you. The council will approve the next general plan after the election. Based on the current progress, what amendments are you most likely going to need to implement?
I would like to change the wording of zoning regulations so that they're very specific and have measurable outcomes. In my experience, a lot of the zoning regulations are very vague, and they lead to different interpretations that are very subjective. We have to also begin to think more, less about changes in the county that benefit economic development and think about residential development, residential benefits, and also the environment. We have housing going in that's acres and acres of million-dollar properties, and then we have, you know, the subsidized housing, and it's creating segregated communities in our county. And we have to have housing that's available to a wide range of prices.
Thank you. Liz will now start again for you. Do you support fast-tracking a revitalization of the Route 1 corridor?
Well, yes, I do. I don't know how we do that, though, right? I mean, four years ago, we had the same position. I would lament the fact that we paid for plans and studies for what we're going to do on Route 1. We have pretty little small-area plans, and then nothing ever happens. Right now, as part of this general plan process, Tower County by design, this is going on now, we learned from Department of Planning and Zoning during work sessions for the budget that they've dedicated $50,000 for yet another plan. There's a rolling consistency on Route 1 and that 11 miles that stretches from Baltimore County to Nellie County, and that is for forever, really, right? It has been in service to freight trucks. And all of a sudden, at some point in time, someone decided it was a good idea to put really high-density residential right up along the curve of a multi-lane highway that in many places is extraordinarily dangerous. So safety is where I would like to see those first dollars spent on our Route 1, is making it safe for those families who are there now and sending kids to schools, you know, right around the corner. Safety is where the plan should be on.
Thank you. Sheila. Would you support increasing the length of time developers have to build in overcrowded school zones?
As an interesting question, it's going to take a lot more than 60 seconds to answer that. The current length of time, I think the length of time is going to be, have to be revisited when we look at AFC, when we look at the, when we look at AFC after the general plan. I apologize, my phone literally going off. I don't know what's happening. But on the space, no, I don't believe that the length of time needs to be analyzed or needs to be stretched out. I think we already are dealing with a housing crisis or housing shortage here in Howard County, with this is the second fastest-growing county in the state. Housing crises are going through the roof, and it will continue to. And that's why we're going to have our seniors as well as our younger professionals, when they try to come into this community, there is not enough, they will not be, they'll be priced out, to be blunt. And so we have to figure out ways to address school overcrowding, make sure that we pack that infrastructure. I need to work on my time and work on this thing.
That's okay. You can put it on your website, and I'm sure our audience would be very happy to hear that. There, next question. Would you require developers to set aside land for new schools if the area schools are already over capacity? What thresholds would you set? Should I agree there?
No, no, no. I would love to require developers to set aside land for schools. And as a matter of fact, Ms. Rickley and I have already looked into that. We were hopeful that we could pass legislation to do exactly that. And we were informed by our Office of Law that it would be very difficult to do, which is most unfortunate. We may want to revisit that again in the coming term, but I think that it's very deeply concerned, and where I think we might be able to actually make some inroads is in the general plan process. Because I have already stated to Department of Planning and Zoning that if we're not setting aside land and we're not planning for schools as we are planning for more development, then we're not doing, we're doing a disservice to our county and to our school district and to the children of Howard County.
Kristian. If you take large donations from applicants, how will you address the appearance of conflicts of interest with donor zoning decisions?
Sorry, what do you mean?
Well, I'll repeat the question. If you take large donations from applicants, how will you address the appearance of conflicts of interest with donor zoning decisions?
Applicants to what?
Oh, zoning.
Zoning, okay. Oh, so like, there's been an election, and people donated throughout the election, and then years later, there's a case, and that case is before us, and then that's your question?
That, that's my question.
Okay, well, I think the Citizens Election Fund is one really excellent way to reduce that perception. I think often people see, you know, one and, you know, another one, and they, oh, that equals six. But really, you know, people, I'm a person of integrity. I know that there's a lot, there are a lot of people out there trying to sow distrust in the community and in government, and that's why, one of the reasons I'm so supportive of the Citizens Election Fund program. It's only individuals. So there's not even a chance for someone to accuse someone of something of impropriety, because it's just not, not relevant. And so I think that, I would say that's how I address it. That's one of the reasons I pursue the Citizens Election Fund and am a Citizens Election Fund candidate, because I believe in that process, and I believe in integrity, and I, always upset me when people make false accusations.
Thank you. For our audience, by the way, if you have questions, you can write them and give it to Terry here. Sorry, next question. What kind of changes to the zoning regulations could improve the could improve the character and quality of new developments and the environment?
One of the best places to go is the Howard County Advisory Committee. Citizens came and made an excellent report on that. And their recommendations are great. I would go and I would advise people to read that. What were the, could you repeat again the other part?
What kind of changes to the zoning regulations could improve the character and quality of new developments and the environment?
Right. One of the best recommendations they made is that there would be measurable standards where when you make any kind of suggestion or change, you would be able to measure it. So I would say anything that begins as a report or anything they say they're going to address, they should have measurable standards with whatever changes they're going to make.
How would you manage the struggle between adding affordable housing units and overcrowding our schools without pitting the provenance of each against each other?
That's difficult. If we'd have been able to do that 20 years ago, we would have. Right now, I'm against any kind of housing being added because we can't guarantee that it's not going to overcrowd the schools. We have, as I said, 5,500 kids and 222 trailers. I've also looked at what is called affordable housing in my district, and the reviews that I've seen, first of all, the reviews are generally marking out of 1 out of 1 to 5 scale, about 1.3. And then the comments are, "It's unsafe to go at the parking lot at night because of the crime." "My girlfriend is afraid to walk the dog." The sanitary conditions in these places, there were comments about vermin. I don't think we're doing people a favor to put them in affordable housing in a pocket of poverty where they can't get to a grocery store for decent food because they don't have a car. So I'm not for it right now.
Thank you. What are the best ways citizens can provide input to you and have influence on planning for responsible growth within the county?
Meaning, once I become a county council member?
Yes.
Because that's where I have to, yeah, well, I would have town halls. They could email me. Writing letters, writing email. I've written emails to my council members and had discussions through email. We have Zoom calls. We have technology where people can talk face-to-face now. So I think that's it. Carrier pigeons?
Perfect. Perfect. Who does a lot of pigeons, right? Liz, the next question is for you. With undeveloped land in the county becoming more scarce, what should the county policies focus on over the next two decades?
I think that's a two-part answer. The first part would be, I think we have to look really carefully at what undeveloped land remains and make sure we're putting into preservation. That should be, and that includes the forested space, the wetlands, the floodplains. We should be really deliberate about where we're going to continue to allow that last 2% to be developed. What can be developed is what's already developed, redevelopment, like along Route 1 or like along Route 40, where there's plenty of opportunity to expand upon and do better there. My one concern with redevelopment is something that we will be focusing on in the next term, is that in general, like, the regulations tend to be more lax to redevelopment, and I think for good reason because it wants to incentivize that. But you can see a redevelopment not employ a lot of the stormwater controls or some of the other environmental requirements you want to see there. So we have to strike a balance to make sure that we're incorporating green space into redevelopment in these places that will most benefit from that.
Thank you. Sir. With limited space available in the east, would you be willing to build new schools in current green spaces? What is more important, schools or green space?
Great question. And those are two of my three biggest priorities, the preservation of green spaces as well as the fact that we need, we need more schools. In terms, in terms of what's more important, I would, I would probably suggest to you that education is paramount. Now, again, everything that I do and much of, most of the work that I do in the community is centered around the preservation and as well as reconnecting people with the natural world. So when I say that education is something, or building more schools to deal with the overcrowding, like, I say that, again, this is, this, we have six seconds to answer this question. It's something that requires a lot of nuance. But I would say a six-second question, I would say, yes, education. I also believe that when we're looking at, we can also expand current school infrastructure. Look at, like, what they did with Wild Lake Middle School. That is something that we need to spend a lot of time working on, and then maybe we wouldn't have to make that type of decision.
Thank you. Deb. What parts of the county are ripe for redevelopment or revitalization projects? What tools will you use to revitalize these areas?
What part of the county is ripe for redevelopment or revitalization?
Exactly.
Well, I would have to very much agree with my council colleague, Liz Walsh. I think Route 1 and Route 40 are ripe for redevelopment and revitalization. Some of the areas that, that have been suggested for redevelopment, such as the village centers, have other issues that involve communities that have been very much against that sort of redevelopment because right now, that redevelopment has been, for the most part, the suggestion of hundreds of luxury apartments. And that has not been a popular aspect for the local communities. So I would suggest that we look at areas where there are communities looking for redevelopment. And again, I think that Route 1 and Route 40 would be two areas.
Thank you. Christiane. What is your view on conservation in the county? Should we preserve more than we currently are?
So right now, we're about over 48% of preserved land in Howard County. And I think that we can certainly add a little bit more. We've just approved a program that will allow the county to purchase conservation easements from nonprofits. So that's a process that prior to Camp Ilchester and the Girl Scout Board wanting to sell it, if it had been a previous board, that's something they could have used to put that land in preservation. So I'm very glad that we're working with the concierency to expand our preservation options. We currently now are able to do agricultural preservation. We're able to do environmental preservation. And then we also overhauled, oh man, you're right about the timer. It's going fast. We, in the beginning of our term, we tackled the Forest Conservation Act. And so we have added a lot of retained green space through that and preserve the small parts that we have left. But, yeah, the answer is we can add to it, certainly.
Thank you. Would you support legislation to increase the size of the county council? Why or why not?
I would not support legislation to increase the county council, just as I would for the Supreme Court. Because, as I taught my students in math, one hole is still one out of 100, it's still a hole. So the numbers aren't going to do anything but probably cause more confusion. So we just have to learn to work together, and I think the numbers are fine.
Thank you. William. Would you support legislation creating an independent zoning board? Why or why not?
Absolutely. I testified before the Charter Review Commission on two things. One was the number of county council members, and I suggested that there be seven so that Elk Ridge, North Laurel and Savage could be represented by people. I have their best interests at heart, right of in Columbia and don't know their problems. So I would say that, and one of the other things was, an independent zoning board that would not be a magnet for developer and other interest money to come to. I'd like to do the same thing with the liquor board. They can report to, they could be an appeal process up to the county council. But I think having the county council be the zoning board is just a problem that has hurt the county very badly already.
Thank you. Joan, for you. What piece of legislation would you like to set forth if elected?
I don't know. One piece of legislation, yeah. I would like to review the zoning, as I mentioned earlier, and make sure that the regulations are measurable and consistent with one another. There's so many facets of zoning that have to be addressed, and they, it's, they have to be reviewed, and it's not just one rule that we could pass to remedy that.
And I want to start on audience questions before I come to mine again, so that our audience gets to participate here. You know, in this case, I think we'll go in the random order. Christiane, this one is for you.
All right.
What specific steps will you take to protect parental rights as it relates to county policy and input? You may not answer the council, you may not, you may not answer. The council doesn't control the Board of Education because history demonstrates the influence that policy, that the council members have on board policy.
Sorry, the question is about parental voice in public education?
That is, to county policy, not parental education, not just education. Parental rights as it relates to county policy.
I mean...
I'm assuming it's for...
I mean, I guess I would say that...
School education.
For education, that's the Board of Education, and we would have to make sure that they're complying with all, you know, state regulations. And then we certainly want citizens to have a voice, whether they're parents or not, in all county decisions. And we have a lot of public forums to allow that level of participation.
The questioner did write that, you know, the Board of Education may control it, but you have influence over it. So any way you will use the influence specifically?
We don't have that much influence. My honest answer, as a parent, as a legislator, it is, they are independent boards, but we are independent bodies. So that's my answer.
Thanks. I'll go with William. What is your plan for increasing oversight of the already-approved TIF?
The TIF?
Yes.
I don't particularly understand, I'm a finance guy, and I looked at the TIF, the tax increment funding financing. And I, I thought it was poorly put together. I think that we need to have somebody either do a programmatic audit. There was a question earlier about auditing the books. You can audit the books all you want. It won't get you anything. What you want to do is look at auditing the programs. Did they spend the money the way they said they would? And did they get the results they said they would? So we may need to have something like some of the counties like Waltsburg County and have an inspector general and go in and look at these things. It isn't the budget that's important. It's how the money is spent that's important. If you want to add more teachers and the money gets spent on something else, you haven't, you haven't accomplished your goal.
Thank you. Why do we have kids in trailers when we are giving millions to developers? Why co-houses? Why not schools?
Why do we have kids in trailers? Because we haven't been able to prioritize giving enough money for school construction to keep up with the number of people who are moving to Howard County with children who want to go to our schools. That is the simple answer. And why do we, what, so then there was a question, the second part of the question was, I think, developers versus school construction. And I will repeat what Ms. Ripley said earlier. We were the first county council in 19 years to raise the school impact fee. It went from $1.33 per square foot for developers to pay to $7.50 per square foot. And all that money goes to school construction. We are making inroads.
Thank you. So this question, I think Liz will go to you. What regulations within Apco do you think are okay as they stand? Which ones are you committed to changing?
I'm going to answer the second part first. I'm getting some all my time. I've tried to change the waiting period twice. The chart that Deb held up shows you where theoretically our schools are closed, but they're not closed. They're subject to a waiting period. And a waiting period that right now is almost coextensive with the time for a developer to get through the ordinary development process. So the wait time in some circumstances, depending on when you file your, your first plan, is zero years, notwithstanding what color your school and your community, your neighborhood is on that chart. I think we need a waiting period. I tried it twice. I tried it in 2019, a CD-17. I tried it again in 2020, a CD-1, after comprehensive redistricting because I thought that was the condition to get a third vote because that's what I need on the five-layer council. It didn't happen. I agree with what Jensen said earlier, is that we need to add categories to particularly life safety, but I also think green space and bike and walkways also should be part of our Apco consideration. I don't have a lot of other things, but that's present.
Thank you. Mr. Jensen. This is a specific question for you, asked by an audience. So I'm not choosing you, they chose you. So good. And by the way, if I don't take your question, it's not because I don't like it, I just don't think it's... I don't want to take a question that I, that I feel, and again, it's not your fault, it's my fault, that I feel like it's a hit piece. So if I don't take it, it means I don't feel comfortable asking it. It's not you, it's me. Mr. Jensen?
Yes, sir.
Are you in favor of eliminating the use tax increment financing, TIF, to facilitate Howard Hughes cost proposals?
Do you mind repeating that?
Are you in favor of eliminating the use tax increment financing, TIF, to facilitate Howard Hughes cost proposals?
Okay. So in many local governments, just to explain, in many local governments, TIF or tax increment financing is a device that's utilized to incentivize certain development. So Howard Hughes is one of the largest developers in Howard County. So, so that question is whether, and they're also responsible for doing a lot of the redevelopment as well as development of downtown, looking at the Mariner District, the Wellness District, and then the upcoming Midtown District. This was done approximately 10 years ago with the Downtown Development Plan and over the course of the past council, the past prior council. That was a device that was utilized. Again, it's something that's frequently utilized. Do I think that it's something that we need to appropriately stop? No. Do I think it's something that, like all things, we routinely reexamine to ensure that it works and it works well? We have programmatic, that's why there are things like programmatic audits. But short answer, no.
Okay, thank you. Let's start from here and then again, continue with our rapid fire. Besides the use of SROs in school, what else will you legislate to make our schools safer? And if you're not in favor of SROs, you can say that as well.
Yeah, I, rather than SROs, I wonder if better would be counselors who are trained with childhood development, family counseling. who are trained with childhood development, family counseling, and mental health issues. I'd also like to see more exercise for the children and better food choices. You know, especially with the buses now, they pick children up right at their mailbox. You know, when I was a kid, I had to walk a mile to the bus stop and it allowed for socialization and exercise and relaxing. And so yeah, more exercise, better meals, and someone to talk to, a counselor and a friend. I'd like to also see more art and music. There's a lot of emphasis on science and technology and that's my background. But art and music are also so important in creativity and self-expression.
Thank you. Phil, you're going to love this question because it follows this one in terms of answers. New extension of walking distance standards will significantly increase the number of children requiring hazard busing or personal auto use solely in an effort to fill a yard and transportation funding. What legislation would you further to address this catch-22 situation?
Well, this is an issue that straddles both the Board of Education and the county. We have 480 bus routes right now. Each bus route costs $119,500. I think that perhaps making walkers who can get to their school quickly and not taking buses and busing them to other schools or whatever reason you want would probably be a good idea. Every eight bus routes we could cut, we could save a million dollars that we could put to other higher priority needs. As far as security, I think our children are our most precious resource and we should do everything we can to protect them. And if that means that we need to change the design of the schools to bar access to people that we don't want in them and keep them safe, as I said earlier, the trailers are not safe.
Sheena? What public safety item would you improve in your next authored bill? What public safety item would you improve in your next authored bill? So if there's a bill on public safety, what safety item would you propose?
Are you saying "authored"? I just can't hear that.
Authored.
What, "authored"?
Yeah.
Okay, just one more time.
Sure, absolutely. What public safety item would you improve in your next authored bill?
I would improve our SROs in our schools. I think we do need them. Maybe they don't have to be in full dress, but most teachers are not ready to handle the responsibilities of what we just witnessed and what we have been witnessing enough. So to the point where we should have safety officials in our schools that know how to handle and deal with things as dangerous as guns and knives and weapons. And we just have to be realistic that that's the world we live in. Children have issues that are so severe that we need another level of help with it and not necessarily a teacher.
Thank you. Christiane? How would you improve bus service in the county?
Like regional transit service or like school bus?
Bus service in the county, so it's transit service.
Oh, well, I think there's a lot of ways that we can do this. I mean, the first thing we need to do is recover our driver positions. One of the reasons our bus service suffers is because we have a shortage of CDL drivers, which again, I'm sure every parent in the school system knows because, well, it's been a long year. So the number one thing we can do is to increase the number of drivers we have. Our transportation is already working to make sure that we train the drivers, that we can add them, because if you don't have the drivers, we can't increase the headwinds. So we need to make our bus service a thing that you would choose. It's not going to be for every ride or every trip you need to take, but how can we make the bus an option that people would choose? I had the opportunity to work to expand bus passes for our seniors and juniors in our school system. They now all receive free bus passes if their school receives RTA Transit. So I think on the one side, having the passengers understand the system better so we have more people choosing it, and then on the other hand, we need to increase the drivers and improve the service so people want to choose it. But I could probably talk all night about transit.
We can see that. Thank you. Deb? Do you see yourself as a critical viewer of executive legislation or a facilitator?
A critical viewer?
Of executive legislation or a facilitator?
The county executive's legislation.
Yeah.
I see myself as an objective viewer of the county executive's legislation. Ninety percent of it, ninety percent of all of our legislation actually is unanimous. We vote unanimously yes on the county executive's legislation. And 10% of it is probably, well, we're going to question this, are we going to table that? Do we need more information here? Maybe we need to have an extra public hearing, a lengthy work session. And I think that it's important in our law, not just to rubber stamp everything that we receive from the county executive, but to question it and make sure that this is the right thing for the county. So I don't know that I would call that critical so much as doing my job. And I think that it's really important that we all do our job.
Thank you. Mr. Jensen? Many people leave Howard County when their children leave out of the school system. How would you encourage older county residents to stay in Howard County?
I'd be five minutes for this one, but it goes back even to Christiane's question in terms of the transportation or bus. You can have all the CDL drivers possible and at the end of the day, because it was built in a suburban model, we're going to continue to have a bus system operating on a Saturday schedule always. And that also feeds into how do we incentivize? When you look at your life cycle, you want young families to come in with kids and then you want them to cycle out, but you want, you need that institutional knowledge within this community. Right now, young professionals and our Asian members, they cannot buy. In fact, that's why many people are holding on to many of these homes. You have two people living in a five-bedroom, four-bedroom home and even if they were to sell it, they can't move into one of the super expensive apartments where we want. So that's where affordable housing also comes in. All of this stuff is intersectional and I need more than a minute to fully go into that question. That's a great question.
Thank you for those, you know, somebody who wrote that, I just read it, sure. Liz, this is our last question before we go towards closing statements and be respectful of our time, but I think it's a very good question, Liz, again. Would your DEI objectives, diversity, equity, and inclusion objectives, be most achievable through the council's rezoning authority or increased services in the community?
I would answer that rezoning because we have more direct control over zoning than we do in setting aside allocations for respective agencies or service providers. You know, we do that as an oversight goal in the council, but where we really do have the influence is zoning. And so how we enforce, or not how we enforce laws, we don't do that either, but how we enforce laws when they're before us as a zoning board and whether we have an eye to the projects coming before us are inclusive. I don't think that that necessarily has happened before. Our zoning board heard a case where Hickory Ridge, that was 100% so-called luxury apartment. There was zero provision for affordable housing in that entire proposal. Same with Erickson. This council sitting as a zoning board approved an Erickson proposal that I don't think actually included as much affordable housing as we should have and didn't make provisions for those applicants who could get in to pay a really hefty service or entrance fee.
Thank you, Liz. Before we go towards those closing statements, just a quick raise of hands. Have you signed the No Dark Money pledge?
That's the Republican Citizens' Election Fund?
Yeah. Yeah. This, second, quick raise of hands. Are you currently or have been a ETA member?
Currently or have been.
Have been? Okay, good, thanks. Just wanted our cameras to see that. But thank you, everyone, you know, for coming here today. I would like you to say your two minutes of closing statement by people who select you. And if something I missed in terms of answering, you know, asking a question, feel free to do that as well. But you have two minutes each and we'll start with Joan.
Well, first of all...
We'll start with Joan.
Oh, I forgot you said Joan.
Yeah, maybe I'll start by going back to the question that I dropped through a line bomb about what would be the first thing I would do. And one thing that, Howard County is such a great place to live, but one thing that's very disturbing to me is driving by new residential developments where there's million-dollar homes and there aren't anything affordable for the average resident in Howard County. So this is generating segregated communities and then we have to start talking about busing so that our children learn how to interact with people of different economic standings. We also have the ability for developers to bypass AFCO by putting in lower-income housing and that's causing crowding in crowded schools. All this residential development is for people who want to come here to live in Howard County because it's so great. But it's really, the residential development is really for outside interests. We have to think more about the problems that we're seeing for our residents here now. And those are, all of this building is causing overcrowded schools, traffic congestion, and loss of our open spaces. The root cause then is land use. We have to be more serious about how we're using our land and look towards a sustainable economy, one that's not based on economic development, but also based on social considerations and the environment. And I think we can balance all three of those. I'm shooting, I'm trying to get the Citizens' Election Fund. I need a few more donations to make that. And you can learn more about my campaign on joanpontius.com. I hope I can count on your support and I'm looking forward to the additional forums coming our way.
Just to clarify, I'm not taking any developer money. If you look at the two times I ran for state control, I'm not going to be able to raise money anywhere. But if you feel so inclined out on the table out there, there's a nice stamp on though, I am kind, that can get me some donations. I got into this race because I heard three and a half years ago at the investiture of the incumbents, that this election was all about the children. If I look at the children in my district, District Three, they have not fared well in the last three and a half years. I started out looking at getting rid of the trailers because I feel that they are unsafe, they don't have sprinkler systems, they're subject to mold in the summer because they're not air-conditioned in the summer and a high wind can take one of them like Dorothy off to Oz. And there are other more tragic things that can happen and I don't have to go into them. They need to be, the children need to be behind concrete block walls and steel doors. I was the Coast Guard, while I was the CFO of the Coast Guard, I was also the Director of Counterintelligence and Security and I was responsible for anti-terrorism force protection. We need to design and renovate existing buildings so that they are safer for our children, our teachers, and our administrators. And finally, why do I want to help? I've been working for over 55 years and I want to help do something good for our community before I move on. I'm going to be term limited by somebody more important than the county executive. So please consider voting for me. I don't have a primary challenge, so I am a Republican. I'll be a nice addition to the county council for diversity. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for coming out. It has been a pleasure and I appreciate these forums. I've seen Howard County change over the last 34 years. We actually had a forum here, not in this school, but in another place in Columbia where we were actually censored. And I've been a 34-year resident in Howard County and I was that, just amazed that that happened here. We came here for the vision of Rouse, James Rouse, for diversity. My family is very mixed. There is no way they will be oppressed and oppressor because they are everything. So I am seeing things that I do not fit the family and the things that we came here for. I think we need more diversity, but I think we need to learn how to listen to each other. I hope that you can vote for someone who maybe, may not think like you, but we all have the same agenda, which is the safety and love of our county and for our children. I am taking CEF funds as well. I'm a private citizen. I'm not trying to be a politician. I'm at shieldforoco.com if you visit my website. I also have material out there. I am working hard to keep the diversity and the stability here in Howard County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'd like to close by thanking everyone that have been, Mr. Loveless, sorry, everyone, Terry, who helped organize tonight. It takes an entire village to get a forum going and it takes an even bigger one to keep an organization going. So thank you for tonight and everything you do throughout the year. And a special shout out to Karen Hall, my homeschool PTAC rep. I'm really, I'm running for reelection because I want to continue the progress that we've made over the last four years. The next term of the county council will be one of the most consequential times in Howard County in recent history. We have an opportunity to make transformative investments in our public school system, to take bold climate action, to address climate change, design our communities to encourage and promote integrated and affordable, connected communities. You know, we have these opportunities before us. We can prioritize racial equity in all our policy decisions. I hope to continue this work in our next term and I hope to earn your support. To learn more about my campaign, you can visit us at christianarigby.com. It's like Christian with an A at the end and Rigby, I guess, instead of rugby. A lot of people, some people mistake my name and think I'm recruiting for a Christian rugby team, but the closest thing to it on the ballot, I guess. But you can sign up for volunteer opportunities, you can learn about events, or you can chip into our grassroots, resident-funded campaign. If I can ever be of service, please reach out and send me an email. I am always happy to help, whether it's something that you might have questions about or why does it work this way or how does it work? I'm always happy, I love talking to our residents and I hope to see you soon. Thanks so much.
Thank you all for coming here tonight and taking part in this forum and giving us your questions. I feel very fortunate to live in this beautiful county. We have great schools, beautiful parks, open space, trails, a diverse community that cares about one another, and a very sound government. But we are also facing some really big issues and this is in the near future as we look at the final phase of Howard County's growth. We need to grapple with school overcrowding, roads that look like parking lots, the potential environmental damage from concentrated light paths and overdevelopment, and how best to accommodate those in need, whether it is through housing or social services. We can and should address all of these issues with transparency and community improvement. The proposed general plan is suggesting we add thousands of new units, mostly apartment buildings and other multifamily dwellings, with no provisions for new schools. The county council has been asked three times in the recent past to approve an AFCO waiver for low-income apartment developments that sends students to five schools that are already overcrowded and have a high percentage of low-income students. I recently passed legislation to evolve the school district earlier in this process so that we would at least know what was coming down the pipe. I will continue to remain vigilant about these issues and do all that is possible to address overcrowding, overdevelopment, and segregation by design. I have a record of being transparent and forthcoming. I stand with our residents on these issues and will not be influenced by those who have big money to spend on campaigns. By using the Citizens' Election Fund to finance my campaign, the people's voice is paramount. I hope you will support my reelection effort. And to find out more, you can go to votedevyoung.com. Thank you.
Good night. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for putting this on. And even though, as you can see, I can be a bit loquacious... And even though, as you can see, I can be a bit loquacious in trying to answer a question within two minutes, I appreciate the well-thought-out questions. To learn more about my platform, to learn more about me, please check out my website at jansonevelyn.com. Evelyn, E-V-E-L-Y-N. Now, I'm running for this office because there are issues that are on the horizon in Howard County, and, but I don't view it as issues, I view it as opportunity. We are in an age of opportunity, and we need leaders on the council that have lived the successes and the struggles of this community, as I have. I'm an immigrant, I came to this county with, I have two young children, I understand what is needed for them in the future. I want to create a space that when my daughters are adults, it will be sustainable, it will be accessible, and it will still be beautiful, filled with green spaces. It will be filled with dense urban, dense, walkable environments. And I am focused on working towards a vision that actually honors what Jim Rouse always wanted. And it's easy to sit back and say, let's keep things the way they were, but this isn't the 1980s anymore. This isn't the 1990s. This is 2022, and times have changed, the second fractious borough of County in the state. We need leaders that will boldly look to the future, boldly build and make sure it's more accessible. Everything I do is centered around environmental, climate justice, social justice, and equity. Please check out my website.
I live in a town that's celebrating its 250th anniversary this year, and it's looked almost the same or in different iterations for those of almost, you know, more than two centuries. I went prom drive shopping in all of MBT's and Main Street in the late 80s. I've been compelled to run for office because I fear, deep in my soul, that what that city will look like, what that town will look like at the bottom of the hill that runs down my street is not going to be the same as it has been 250 years, and that is a direct result of land use. What this county has allowed, what this county continues to allow, in even its most vulnerable water sheds, I was compelled to run for office so that the legacy that we leave, the land that we leave, those historic streetscapes that are there now, that have been there forever and ever, will be there when we are gone. I feel that is our normal obligation. And it applies not only to the pretty streets and what old oak ridge could be, but also the trees and the woodlands and the waterways. Those themselves are historic, cultural, environmental resources that we need to dedicate our attention to in everything that we do. It ties into climate change, but it ties into land use, and land use ties into schools. It's all intersectional. I totally agree with what some of the candidates up here have said today. We need clear, laser-focused attention on how we use land in this county. It has to be uninfluenced by the corporate interests who continue to profit day in, day out, notwithstanding calamitous harm to some of our most valuable resources. I, it's not an accident that I'm here, it's not an accident that I'm going to keep going until I feel like we have set the record straight in terms of what this county wants to pursue. The general plan exercise that's coming, I think, is the single biggest thing that the next four years is going to bring to whoever among us sits on that council, and you need someone there who shares the same focus that you do and the same issues that you care most about for you and for your children.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you all for the commitment, time. It takes a lot to uplift our community, and we are so glad that you're running. On behalf of PTHC, I wish all of you the very best, and I hope our county goes upwards and onwards. Thank you, audience, for being here, being engaged. Your involvement is what makes Howard County, Howard County. Please join me in thanking all the candidates.